All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Welcome to the webinar School Board Service in Arizona brought to you by the Arizona School Boards Association. We're so pleased to have folks from all around Arizona taking part in this event today, and we applaud your interest in becoming a member of your local school board. What you'll hear today in today's webinar is that serving as a member of your school board is challenging, but also one of the most rewarding jobs you'll ever undertake. The conversation over the next hour is intended to help you determine whether being a school board member is right for you, give you a better understanding of the duties and responsibilities of the position, and provide important details about running for election. We'll take time at the end of the webinar to answer your questions. Feel free to submit them at any time during the webinar by using the question area that you'll see on your screen. Just go ahead and type them directly into that box, and we'll get them and address them at the end of the event. My name's Tracy Benson. I'm the Director of Communications for the Arizona School Boards Association, and I'll be facilitating the session today. Your presenters are Karen Loftus, ASBA's Director of Leadership Development, and Chris Thomas, ASBA's Director of Legal and Policy Services. Karen has more than 20 years' experience leading organizational change and training teams. In her role at ASBA, she facilitates board and board member development through a variety of learning and team-building opportunities. Chris is a school law expert and leads ASBA's legal advocacy efforts. He also leads the team that creates the model policy adopted by school boards around the state. In addition, he's been in your shoes. Chris is a former school board member. Before we get started, let me tell you a little bit about the Arizona School Boards Association. We're a private nonprofit organization. We're nonpartisan. Nearly every school board in the state is a member, which means we represent the interests of about 1,200 school board members around the state who serve Arizona's more than 1 million schoolchildren. Our work is focused in these four primary areas. Training and information. We provide information about governance and public education, and provide it through webinars like the one you are a part of today, as well as a host of workshops, conferences, events, through one-on-one dialogue with members, and also through our communications efforts, including the new Arizona Education News Service. We provide advocacy on behalf of Arizona's public schools, which we're actively involved in at the state and the federal level, and policy services, which we provide as a subscription service to nearly all Arizona school boards. We also offer school boards a superintendent's search service. I invite you and really encourage you to visit our website, azspa.org, to learn more. And now I'm going to turn it over to Karen Loftus, who will get the webinar started today.
Hello and welcome. Thanks for joining us today. First of all, I guess we want to start by talking about what the rewards would be for you joining a school board. As you can see, there are a couple of things that come to mind. First and foremost, it's always about increasing student achievement, and by engaging the community and staff in your school district, you'll be able to improve things like student learning, improve the future for our youth and the communities, and of course, it is about educated citizenry. When we think about why school boards matter, we realize that as elected officials, there are a number of components that are important to you. And I think that you'll realize that all of the decisions that are made as a collective governing board impact virtually absolutely every aspect of what goes on in your school board. You'll also be deciding how your children are going to be educated, and as you see from the last two bullet items here, that we really want to make sure that our children's dollars are spent appropriately, accurately, and most importantly, are going to improve student achievement. So as you see as we move forward on the next slide, this is really about reputation, and you've probably heard the term perception is reality before. And in the case of our school boards and the districts, that's often the case. The members of the school board, typically five individuals, are going to be making a lot of decisions that impact the district. And the information that the board is able to share with the community or the public is just as important in understanding what's going on so that they are supportive, not only the parents of the children that are in your school, but the staff that works in the schools, as well as the broader community in general. So when you think about what school board members do, I really see it as sort of a four-fold track. On the one hand, it's from a big-picture perspective, looking at the direction that the district wants to go, and that's often done in the forefront with the mission, vision, values discussion, followed by setting the goals and the structures of the district. As you can see, that there are a number of goals that the district wants to proceed with, but what those are, how they get measured, and how the results come back to you as a board are information that you're going to want to be asking for. When we look at accountability, this is also, in my mind, an issue about transparency. This is the issue of making sure that what the governing board is saying and doing is respecting and honoring and representing the views of the community, the district, the staff, the superintendent, and that you're living out in unison with that. And then obviously, the last area, advocating for students, is foremost of importance. That is always on our minds at the Arizona School Boards Association, and our goal is to support you in all of your efforts to do that. Keep in mind that as an individual board member, you have no power per se as an individual board member. Your power is as a collective board, when the five of you, or whatever your group number size is, is what votes at that time, and that collective power is the power of the governing board.
Welcome. A couple of things before I go into the basics of the board services. First, I want to just also echo what Tracy and Karen have said, in that I applaud you in taking this step and showing this interest in being on a school board. School boards are very, very important to really our whole democratic society, and it's a rewarding experience. I found it to be an extremely rewarding experience, and I know you will too. It's a lot of responsibility, no question, but it really is a wonderful experience and a wonderful way to volunteer your time. The basics in terms of who can be on a school board are pretty minimal. First of all, you're talking about a four-year term. Unless you're filling the vacancy of somebody else's seat who had to leave early, you're talking about a full four-year term. We have elections only in even-numbered years, and this, of course, is an election year. These are nonpartisan positions, and this is important because not only from a standpoint of running your election and being part of a different part of the ballot than the legislative or president or congress or anything like that, the fact is that these are intended to be nonpartisan positions. The decisions that you will make, while they may be informed by your own ideology or partisanship, are not partisan in nature. And therefore, these positions are nonpartisan. You don't run as a Democrat, or Republican, or Independent, or Libertarian, or anything like that. Your service will begin, if you win, will begin in January following the election. And nobody's told you yet. It is a job or a position that does not have a pay requirement. Unlike some elected officials, you do not get paid. You are volunteering your time, but make no mistake, you are an elected official with all of that that entails. We do have some board members that are appointed by the county superintendent when there is a vacancy, and each county superintendent follows a different procedure for making those appointments. But those individuals as well carry all of the powers that a school board member would have, whether they're elected or not. If you are one of those positions and you get appointed by the county superintendent, then you would have to run for your own seat, either the remainder of the term or for a new four-year term, the next time the general election comes up. Your eligibility to run, essentially, you have to be a resident of the district and have been a resident of the district for at least one year prior to the date of the election. And that's an ongoing requirement, so you can't leave the district once you are a member and still be a qualified member of the board. You have to be a registered voter as well, and you cannot be employed by the district in which you are seeking to serve. Essentially, there's a prohibition in law that says you cannot work for the district and be on the board, nor can your spouse work for the district while you're on the board. And for those that are really anxious or eager to be on a school board, you can also not be on two boards at one time. You can't be on two school boards at one time. And there's also a few family restrictions as well. You can't be, family members cannot be on the same board if they have shared that household during a period of, I think it's three years or four years prior to that. So it's kind of a strange restriction that was just added the last few years, but it is one of the other restrictions from serving on the board.
So this is Karen again. The next few slides are going to talk about a few different aspects of what it takes to be a school board member. And so at this point, I'd like to have you ask yourself, do you have a vision and goals? And this is again about academic achievement. Being on the school board is always about being a visionary, looking forward to the future of what the district is wanting your students to be able to achieve, and allowing the superintendent to put in place processes to make those things happen. The next slide talks about inspiration and building confidence. And the idea behind this one is that there are a lot of stakeholders in your community that may or may not be parents of children or family members in your district, but they are business owners that represent your community. They are people that have an impact in what the results of your students are doing. And so to that degree, are you reaching out? Do you have means of communicating with them and understanding what the needs of the community are? And are you able to inspire those individuals for the best for your students and your community? The other thing I wanted to talk about was vision, and this is that big-picture view. And so whether your district is all about bringing technology to the forefront, or if it is about STEM-related items, or whatever your focus for your district might be, it's really about painting that picture and understanding that your role as a school board is to paint that picture and then allow the superintendent the opportunity to make the day-to-day operations happen so that that work can get done.
This is the distinction between what the board does and what the superintendent does, because there are essentially two forks in the road when it comes to the operations of the school district and governing the school district. One is the governance side, one is the management and operations side. The board clearly is on the governance side of the fork. The board's role is to govern. They essentially hire and fire and evaluate one person and no one else, which is essentially the superintendent. That person, he or she, then is responsible for the hiring and firing and evaluating of the rest of the staff, either directly or through subsidiaries. The board sets the direction and policy, as Karen has mentioned, and they monitor progress towards the set goals that they have done. They are accountable to the community. And the reason we have school boards, as opposed to just having superintendents and just letting them run things without a board, is that the community's interests are reflected at the board table and through the schools. And so it's really important that the board stay connected to the community and reflect the community's values and wishes. The superintendent, on the other side of the fork, is there to manage the day-to-day operations of the district. They implement the policies that the board has passed as part of their policy manual, and they make progress towards the goals that have been set by the board. So the management side is clearly separate from the board side, but they are interrelated. There is regular progress reports, and there are general kind of oversight provided by the board without actually doing the day-to-day functions of the school district. The superintendent is accountable to the board, but I do mean that in the collective sense. Well, you'll hear this theme over and over again. It is the board collectively. It is not individual board members. So the superintendent does not have five bosses. The superintendent has one boss, and the one boss is the board. The legal authority and chain of command, essentially, this is really important to understand how school districts in this state work. School districts in this state are political subdivisions of the state. The state legislature has the authority and the requirement to establish a general and uniform public school system. They have done so through establishing school districts that run the schools. They set the rules for those school districts and how they operate. There is also, the federal government has had an increasing role in education, certainly over the last 40 years, but even more so over the last 10 or 15 years, and so we have to be concerned about the roles that the federal government has laid for us as well. Typically, those come with money. Federal government will ask for, will give us funding for certain things, and then the regulations come along with it. So you have the state and federal rules and regulations, and then the governing board has to take those rules and regulations, implement them, and operationalize them in terms of policy for the staff to then follow, which is, again, the board makes policy, it does not carry out the policy. And the carrying out of the policy is done by the superintendent and his or her staff.
So when we use the term senior leadership team, what I'm referring to here is the combination of the governing board plus the superintendent. And in many situations, I also include the direct reports of the superintendent, who, these being the people that get together most frequently to address the issues and needs within the district. The idea of that senior leadership team, much like any team that one would belong to in a work environment, is that it's one of respect. Respect just doesn't come. It's obviously earned, but it starts with an element of trust, and in that trust, a lot of that involves communication. And what I mean by that is if you've ever sat through a governing board meeting and you sit through the agenda, you'll notice that there is a definite process to how that meeting goes. And a lot of the dialogue that happens within a discussion of a topic, it's either on the agenda, and that is the place for the dialogue, or the room for questions is intended to be outside of the meeting prior to the governing board meeting. And so the idea of having a lot of dialogue and being clear on roles and responsibilities, as Chris mentioned, it's the board's role to kind of identify the what, and it's the superintendent's role to identify the how. And so the idea, as you see from these bottom check-marked items, is it's not about surprises. It's not about any sort of gotcha. It's certainly about understanding the different roles and responsibilities, being attuned to those, asking the questions ahead of time, making sure that we do vote as appropriate for the dialogue that comes aboard, and to live with the consequences and the outcomes of those board decisions. This chart might be familiar to you. You might know it as a PDA, Plan Do Act chart, but the idea here is that this is kind of a systemic slide of the role of the governing board, because when you, again, you think about what the board is going to be doing, it's kind of a high level, not the day-to-day. And so when you look at the planning side, this is clearly about setting the goals, the direction, the mission, vision, values. The preparation work may happen in a work-study session, or maybe some of the work that administration does outside of your governing board meetings. In your meetings, you're going to be acting on things clearly, much like your superintendent's administration team is going to be acting on things within their sphere of influence. The idea of reflecting is looking back at your successes and/or failures and identifying what the cause of that might be, what you could do differently. And of course, that last slide component is the celebration. And as you can probably know from a lot of employee engagement surveys, the idea is that for employees to be engaged in the work that they do, they have to feel wanted, feel like they have some level of professional development, somebody cares about them, and whether that's the teachers or educators in your district, or the role that you as a governing board member have, that last step, celebrate, is an important one as well. I want to take an opportunity to ask you one more question of do you have what it takes? And that is about the concerns that you have and that you're willing to address while you're a board member. Obviously, there are a wide variety of concerns that your district might be faced with. They could be facility issues, they could be bandwidth issues, they could be staffing issues, they could be anything. And so what we want to make sure that you, as a potential governing board member, are open to, is that you're looking at the broadest range of things and not just one topic that is of particular interest to you. You know, when I look at this next one, Chris, I'm wondering, from your perspective about working collaboratively, how have you found the best boards work together collaboratively?
I think the best boards, they learn from each other, they learn from the administration, they understand what their role is in the process, and that's reinforced by the administration. Decisions are not made on a snap moment in time, but they are, there are study sessions, there are discussions, there's retreats, where they really look at the vision and the goals and how any individual effort fits in there. And then ultimately, when those decisions are arrived at, it's by consensus, because all of the concerns have been dealt with, and the best product that everybody can support comes out of that. So I would say big decisions are not done quickly, they're done collaboratively over time, and that's, I think, the definition of a good working board.
You know, Chris, maybe as a sidebar, we've talked about governing board meetings, and then you've also used a few other terms about other ways that the governing board gets together. You want to take a second and sort of just differentiate between the work that goes on in the governing board meeting and what some of these other ones you're referring to are?
Sure. Well, there's, essentially, when the board makes decisions, they're at regular meetings, where it's the first Tuesday of every month, or the first and third Tuesday of every month. However, there may be other meetings as needed that may occur, which some boards will begin their meeting in a study session where they have one issue to look at, and it's more of a free-flowing conversation. It's been noticed and everything for the public, public's, of course, invited to attend, but they have that conversation, say, over a set period of time, half an hour or an hour, and some ideas may come out of that discussion that will be acted on at a later time. And so that, I think, is an effective way of utilizing the board as a resource, and the board clearly focusing on the things that it ought to focus on. You know, for instance, passing a budget, which is really important in the district, that should never be done in one meeting. By the time the budget goes for final adoption, there should be no surprises among the community or by the board of what's in that budget and what choices have been made along the way to create that budget. So that's why I think that there are different kinds of meetings. Your regular meetings where you actually vote and you make those legal decisions, but then there are things like study sessions and board retreats, and times when you have a little bit, where it's more of a discussion that's intended to both inform and lead to some arrival at a consensus on an issue.
Thanks.
Okay, so I mentioned this before about how governing boards and school districts are political subdivisions of the state, and that the legislature sets forth the rules we have to follow. But one of the important things as well is remember that all of the authority that I'll mention here is really given to the board collectively, and that there is no authority for individual board members. An individual board member acting on their own has no more authority than any citizen would have. They don't have the authority to evaluate staff, they don't have the authority to give direction. Again, they're not one of five bosses, they are part of one boss, of the superintendent. So know that, is that individual board members have to work within the board structure to have a say on how things are going to go. There are two main statutes, however, that you need to be aware of if you want to get a good sense of the kind of authority that boards do hold, and that is 15341, which outlines the general powers and duties and responsibilities that boards must do as a legal entity for school districts. And then there's 15342, which outlines the discretionary powers, where boards have authority to act in a given area should they decide to act in those areas. And a really important point is that boards, because they are political subdivisions of the state, only have the authority that's been given to them by the legislature. So if it's not listed in statute in either general or express terms that a board acts in a given area, they don't have the authority to act. It's important, really, to understand that concept, because it's not seen in the negative. In essence, it's not that the board can act when the statute says not to. It's only that the board can act when the statute says they can. So that's really an important point. In the board room, your role in the board, that's when the board has legal authority. That's when individual board members come together collectively to exercise that power that the board as a whole holds under the law. That discussion at the board table should build support for decisions. That's why we always say that board members should not commit to a particular side of an issue, that they ought to come to a board meeting ready, be informed, having read their material, but be ready to participate in a conversation where your opinion may be changed by what you may hear there, from either your fellow board members or from the superintendent or administration. You must make all your decisions in accordance with the Arizona's Open Meeting Law, which means that all board meetings, all board decisions have to be done at a board meeting that has been properly noticed, that the public has a right to attend, so there's no decisions made outside of the public meeting when the public cannot attend and see actions being done on their behalf. And another important concept, and this goes to the part of being part of a team, is say you had a robust discussion and a debate, and you opposed the action that the board ultimately took. Maybe it was a 4-1 vote. Well, you can, at that point, decide to be a distraction, or you can decide to be a good team player and support the decision of the board, or at least not be vocally opposed to the decision of the board. And we always advocate for that, which is that know that there are bigger forces at play here, and the district looks foolish when one board member who didn't get their way at the board table is in vocal opposition to something that the board has chosen to So that's inside the boardroom. Outside the boardroom, remember, you have no official power, and that you, the board can choose to be a vassal for, or they can undermine decisions. So again, that team part of it, which is that you support the decisions ultimately of the board. So the board has the power, when they act collectively, to create policy, to give overall direction, to create that accountability that is necessary to have community governance of education. The superintendent, their power is significant. We would probably use a different word than great, but it's significant because they have to run the district. They have to run the day-to-day affairs, and the board needs to give that superintendent latitude to do that, which is, again, to set the overall direction, certainly hold that person accountable, but essentially get out of the way when it comes to the day-to-day operations of running the school district.
Some last thought on do you have what it takes? And when you look at the school district that you hope to represent, and you look at the demographics of your students and your community, we would hope that we would have a number of you that bring to the table the diversity of your district, and that's part of why you hope to run. But know that you're doing what is right for all the students in your district, not necessarily the ones that look like you or have the same beliefs as you, but you are in fact representing all children, even if the situation is one that, as Chris just described, using the 4-1 vote as an example, that the board voted on, and it may not be specifically your cup of tea, something that you would prefer, but it is standing up and doing the right thing for all children. Talk about ethics, and whether you're in the school board room or you're in corporate America, the idea of following a code of conduct, I think, is probably something that's familiar to you. The idea in general is about transparency, and it's about having your actions be representative of those that you were standing with. And so when you look at the things you do that are on this list, I don't think anything's going to surprise you. I don't think that there's going to be anything here that you wouldn't feel is inappropriate. The idea is that your objective, you keep an open mind, that, I'm going to make a note about the second one, that you can't compromise the district in any way. And by that, whether that means abstaining from a vote on something that you have a relationship with, that's part of the process of understanding how things work in your district and getting used to that. But the idea is- But the idea is that anything that is going to happen is for the common good of the district. And there are codes of ethics that we would ask that you hold yourselves accountable to, and in fact, that you do maintain some responsibility for. So, when you think about what some of those things are, let's think from the before-the-meeting perspective. Do your homework. You're going to receive the information about the agenda and the paperwork that you need to be reviewing before the meeting, and it's your responsibility to do just that, to pull it up, to look at it, review, ask the questions that you feel are appropriate. Obviously, your attendance at board meetings is important. And so, by being there, and being there with frequency, you're able to make sure that you're staying on top of all the things that are important to you.
Especially, going back to the doing your homework before meetings, and in an earlier slide where we talked about no surprises, that's another good one, where say you've read your board packet, and you'll get a board packet several days in advance of your board meeting. You read the information, and you have some questions. Or maybe you notice something that's a mistake in the board materials. The appropriate thing to do would be, then, to call your superintendent and ask some questions. Because, again, what we're trying to do is avoid surprises. And, you know, that's part of doing the homework. You may get an answer to your question that is more thorough and give you a much better feeling for the issue by doing it that way, as opposed to, you know, waiting to the board meeting and then sort of springing it on the unsuspecting administrator.
Well, and similar to the audience, the one that says, "Share your thoughts before the decision is made", that sort of goes along with what you're saying, Chris. But it's also to take that time to ask the questions you need to do. If you're not familiar with board policy, if you were to actually print those things out, it'd be a pretty thick binder. And so, we realize that there are a lot of policies that a school district is accountable for, and that you would need to learn. And so, there is clearly a learning curve there. It's going to take some time to understand what those are, but we have them available to you electronically. The district has them. They're yours for the looking at, and it's another means to help you, guide you in your decision-making process. The last one I want to mention on there is to participate in training. I think you're probably all aware of that. As educators in your school district, your teachers have professional development. And whether you, they call them professional learning communities, or those half-days off that they have to get educated themselves. The idea of being a governing board member is that there's a lot for you to learn as well. And so, much like that we would request that you take advantage of that training, it's the same type of thing that our educators are doing themselves every day, every week, every year. They're trying to better themselves. And we would love for you to take advantage of the webinars, the training, the conferences, things that we can offer you as well to become a more educated governing board member.
Well, so, you've gotten this far, and you're seriously thinking about running for school board. We hope that you still are. And, again, we think it's incredibly rewarding. So, you need to know, here's the how-to. If you haven't already, you go to your county school superintendents. They're usually at the county seat, or you can call them or write them. And essentially, ask, say that you're interested in running for the school board in your area. The county school superintendent will give you an information packet that contains a lot of the details you're going to need to know about how to run. If you intend, and you've made that decision you're going to run, and you know that you're going to run a full campaign, say you're in a district where you know it's going to be very competitive, and you're going to have to run a full kind of political campaign, you can file at that time, create your campaign committee organization statement with the county elections office. Before then, you go forward and collect your signatures. If you, however, know or don't believe you're going to run a campaign like that, or you think that there's just going to be enough people that are running that are going to be the number of seats, you can file an exemption statement that says you're not going to spend more than $500 in the course of your campaign. Either way, that latter requirement, you should do that before you go to collect signatures. Now, there are some counties, and I would talk to your county superintendent about how they approach this issue, because there are some counties that are real clear that they expect that exemption statement or campaign organization statement to be done before collecting any signatures. There are some counties that are more lenient on that. So, talk to your county superintendent and be clear what the rules are. You then go and collect signatures. And now's a good time to do it. You don't want to wait till July or August, because obviously, with our weather, not only is it hard to go out there and get them, I know, from personal experience, but folks are gone a lot, and it's hard to get signatures. So, you're going to find out from the county superintendent how many signatures you have to collect. And you may want to decide to get a certain percentage of signatures over in case your signatures were challenged. That does happen from time to time, where folks have said, you know, you don't have the valid signatures. And what I mean by a signature is, a person's got to be a registered voter in your district in order to be a qualified person to sign your petition. So, again, you may want to get a cushion before you turn those signatures in with the county superintendent. And there is a deadline. They'll give you that deadline in the packet. And then, from there, you run your campaign. And you'll find out how many people are running. You may have to raise some money in a competitive election. But that, if you look at the totality of our state, that is the exception, not the norm. But I have been, when I ran for school board, it was a very competitive environment. And you had to get out there and get your name known, and say what you stood for, and really press the flesh and get people to know who you are. But ultimately, the decision's made by the voters in your district, and those that receive the most votes will move on and be on the school board.
Well, we've moved through all the information that we hoped to share with you today. And now, it's time to address some of the questions that have come in during the course of the webinar. Before I move on to those, I do want to let you know that we're recording the webinar today, and we'll have it posted on the ASBA website tomorrow. And that is going to be located at azba.org/becoming-a-board-member. azba.org/becomingaboardmember. So, look for that tomorrow. This is a lot of information that Chris and Karen have covered, and you may want to go back and refresh your memory. In addition, on that page, you'll find expanded information on some of these topics that have been covered today. The full code of conduct, and more specifics on what the discretionary and required duties of school board members are. So, be sure to look on our website for that. Now, we'll get into the questions. The first one is, what kind of time commitment should I expect serving on my school board?
That's a great question. Well, it depends on how, first of all, how often does your board meet? It's required that during the school year, that boards meet once a month. Most boards do meet more often than that, usually twice a month. And many boards do meet in times when it's not the school year. So, essentially, you're talking about board meetings, and you're talking about how long those board meetings are. I would guess that it depends on how big your packet is, but an hour to two hours of prep of reading that packet and being familiar with it before you step into the boardroom. In addition, there may be other special meetings that you might attend. There may be school functions that you would like to attend to show support for the district. Those are optional and encouraged, certainly. But at a bare minimum, your legal responsibility is to go to the meetings and go prepared. And so, I would say the time commitment, if I had to ballpark it for the average district, five to 10 hours per month. And I have had board members who have said to me, you know, "This is a full-time job", and I have responded by saying, "You're probably not doing it right." If it is a full-time job, you're probably spending too much time doing things you're not probably supposed to be doing.
Good point.
All right. The next question that we have are, or is, "Do I need any special education or knowledge in school finance or other issues related to public education to run for school board?"
Go ahead.
No.
No, you don't need any special expertise in education. I think what you do need, though, is an open mind and be willing to learn. School law and school finance particularly can be complex, but it's not beyond your grasp in terms of really understanding how the whole system works. And so, we will have, if you are elected and you're on your board in December, we will have our new board orientation, where we go over, you know, all the laws that you need to know, the basics of the school finance system, how school superintendent and boards work together as a team. Some of the concepts we've explored in a surface way today we'll go in depth on later on. So, and it will be an ongoing process as well. You won't understand all of the school finance system in one day. There's people that have studied it for a long time that don't understand all of the intricacies of that. But over time, you will become very well-versed to exercise the role that you play as part of a school board.
You know, I think of it as kind of peeling back the layers of the onion. You sometimes don't realize how many layers you are until you peel away one or two. And as a school board member, there is a lot to learn. I mean, no surprises there. But as you learn more, you can then delve deeper into it. And the questions you might not have thought to ask six months ago now are top of mind. And the training, or the conference, or whatever, the webinar that we offer might then just hit the need at that point. And so, you'll see that our offerings are intended to be able to attract you at different points of your school board membership.
Right. And there are other resources besides the ASBA, certainly. Your own district will provide you with information about your own district's budget, information about school finance, information about your policies. You'll get introduced to your board policies. If you want to get a preview, by the way, of how your board works and the policies, you can go on your district's website, or actually go to ASBA's website. And there's a public side of our policies. And you can go on your own district's policies. Look in Section B, because those are all the board policies and how the board operates. You'll get a good sense of the policies that govern how the board is run.
I would jump in and add, too, that if you haven't been regularly attending the board meetings in your district, it would probably be a good thing to put on your calendar just to know what your particular board, what some of the issues are that they're dealing with right now. And another item that I would suggest, too, would be, you know, just keeping up on the news and seeing what some of the issues are facing other school boards and school districts in the state. You know, doing that through a Google search of news, or jumping onto our Arizona Education News Service website and browsing through to see what some of the big issues are in public education in Arizona today, to keep up to date on that. Here's a question about running for election while being an employee of the district. You can't serve while you're an employee, but can you run for election to that board while you're an employee?
Legally, yes, you can. You can run for election while you're an employee. Now, once you got elected, you would have to choose one, because you're not able to serve while being an employee of the district. However, I will say, even being a current employee running for the district, you need to be aware of, there's another restriction, which is, you're not allowed to use school resources to influence the outcome of an election. So, be aware that, you know, you're going to be, if you are running for the school board and you're on the, an employee of the board, or of the district, that you really are using the school resources properly, and that you are being fair. And also, you know, remember that once you get on the board, you're going to have to leave behind, not only your employment, but, you know, the perspective that you may have as an employee. Because it's different to be in the role of a board seat and making decisions that are in the best interest of all students versus whatever role that you play as an employee of the district. And while you certainly may have a perspective that will be valued, make sure that you're going into it with the right frame of mind, that you're going to be part of a governance team once you get there.
All right. We got a question about where folks can get info on elections in their counties and running for their specific boards. Again, that is through your county superintendent's office. And you can find the contact information for all the 15 county superintendents on the ASBA website in the Becoming a Board Member section. So, they'll be able to provide you with requirements, dates, number of signatures, all of that good information. And the last question we received is, "Will a copy of the PowerPoint be available?" Yes, you'll see that in the recorded webinar that we will post on our website tomorrow. So, be sure to look for that. Those are all the questions that we received. I do want to remind you, as Chris mentioned, we will be doing a new board orientation in December. And we'll be covering all the critical topics that you'll need to know about to start your tenure as a school board member. That's on December 10th, and it'll be held in Phoenix. If you're elected, you will be getting more information about that from us. And last but not least, I want to make sure that you have our contact information. As you know, we've covered a lot of information. And Karen, Chris, and I would be happy to take your questions as you move along in this process. And of course, once you're elected, be a resource to you as a board member.
There was one issue that I just recalled that I think is really important that you understand, which is that if there, in your district, say there were three people, three spots that were open, and there were only two or three people that decided to run at the end of the election, the county superintendent can cancel that election. And you'll have to keep an eye on whether or not that occurs. If that does happen, you won't have to actually be on the ballot. You'll be deemed to be elected if there's just enough people to run or less than enough people to run. And you have put in your required signatures, you will have been deemed to be elected by the county superintendent. So, keep your eye on that as well.
That's a great point. All right. Thank you all for spending time with us today. Good luck out there. And, again, we applaud your interest in serving on your local school board. Thank you.